So good evening, I'm calling to order the quarter to see council work study meeting for July 1. And this work study session does have one business item. We normally don't take public testimony. But I feel it should be would be appropriate for the side of anybody in front of the public wanted to to provide comment on the project on Sydney Avenue for the G M R's board. So at this time, I will ask you to join me in a belligerent.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, we have a published agenda this evening. And we have one member of the public here and Jerry, you would provide any comment about the one business item.
To be honest, I don't see the agenda.
Okay, what did you do? The business item is related to repairs on Sydney Avenue.
I'm glad that it's being there.
Us too, and that's why we have a change order. So Janine, are there any members of the public that could raise their hand and you would acknowledge them and bring them forward? I testimony on the one business item that we have to see.
I do not see anybody with their hand raised to testify at this time.
Okay, so I will close the public comment period and we will conduct our one business item. When we get to our our discussion items and the business item is the adoption of a resolution authorizing temporary amendment of city of order to current policies pertaining to a change order authority for contract. So three sixty-one, the P C I for the Sydney Avenue Sewer Repair Construction Project. Mr. Dorsey, this is yours.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Janine, are you picking me up? By resolution number zero forty, dash two zero, order to the council of adopt current policies and procedures for the city's continuing business services benefit the residents of Port Order. At section seven, no change orders, the city council delegated a signature authority for change orders for large public works to the department director, the maximum delegated authority of fifty thousand into the mayor of the maximum delegated authority of hundred thousand. So long as a particular changer did not exceed ten percent, I couldn't see council operate with or the project or the original contract. For smaller projects, ten percent threshold and potentially lower fifteen and a half thousand dollars per hour, current council for certain change orders that are still under these caps. On April thirteen, twenty twenty-one, for the city council, the contract for C zero three six, dash two one, after destruction or A C I for the Sydney Avenue Sewer Repair Construction Project in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars. July nine, twenty twenty-one, public work department issued the notice to the project A C I on July thirteen, twenty twenty-one, five hundred six, current, the current policy. The department director executed force count for change directors, one through three, in total estimated dollar amount thirty-five thousand dollars, as this amount is within both fifty thousand dollars delegated authority, fifty and under ten percent of total contract amount. Once this works perform, an actual dollar amount of current change order one will then be executed by the department director. If it is only to see thirty-five thousand, we have thirty-six dollars. Public Works Department has received a request by A C I condition ten thousand and four hundred dollars for change direct toward this project, considering identifying potential changes in conditions to the product. This project has its timing and its time of completion are imperative to the public health and safety. It is anticipated that future change orders may exceed the ten percent cap set out by the policies and fifty or hundred thousand dollars women also set out the policies. Returning all the court moves to this project will result in increased cost of employee. According to the public works department, requesting limited waiver, ten percent cap for change orders for the life of this project and an increase in the delegated authority. This will allow the department director to revert to eighty-five thousand for the merit of a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars control. Change contract change order will suspend the work given for council approval. This apartment's got the resolution zero four eight, dash two one, temporarily in section seven, six, current policy two one, remove the ten percent gap on to increase the delegated authority eighty-five or the department director. The mayor do change of Sydney Avenue Sewer Repair and Service. The problem is on the table where the special zero four eight, two one, temporarily. From their policies, two one, we will ten percent. Increase delegated authority of eighty-five thousand, department director and thirty-five thousand, mayor on a change for Sydney Avenue Sewer Repair.
Second.
Yeah, I just want to share. In America, the council, the budget. Although, we pass on some, I just want to hold on this whole. Change order authority. Over a hundred thousand. For increases that are last year, I'm for which changes to our policy. Yes, the eight, the set up here. For this motion is specific.
We're very concerned with the thirteen million dollar workstation down waterfront on a thousand dollars. If it's wrong, we might stop everybody for council. And I know Mark said this, but it's not a motion. And this is for total of project total. Project contract right now is three hundred fifty thousand on change. And we are authorized thirty-five thousand dollar bookwork and this resets the change order authority to a new one hundred thousand. So that's like one thirty-five for an eighty-five, which is fifty plus is the other whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the total. So we should, so you're, when you're talking about the same thing. Pretty much, and that makes sense.
Or a bigger schedule, or a whole of your policy for the concept.
And I think
Yeah, with ten percent, it's small comparisons of anything that comes. We were looking at a tram on project for three years. We had a ten percent to help. We didn't even think at the time for projects under that, that it was actually truncating that value that we picked up. If they had their own million dollars, we wouldn't get there. It's it was or it wasn't the greater of things. Or so it was, it was eliminate that. This was surreal. That didn't happen. And it was worth it. I don't know. Moving, right, the rules. Especially in this case, well, that multiple closures, tours and public information that we're putting out on these. Last thing you want to do is shadow the app for two weeks. For council.
Janine, if you can do me a favor as possible for Jerry's benefit. These side displays, if you put a rejected agenda up on them versus the Zoom meeting and we'll just have a Zoom meeting on the other T V. Is that possible? And you can work on that and we will continue.
Yep, let me try.
So then we have the agenda and maybe the action items on the TVs on the sides.
Thank you.
All all new technology. We're still figuring out how to use it all. So all right, so we have a motion and a second further discussion of this action item related to the Sydney Avenue project. We're going on the temporary amendment of policies related to Sydney Avenue project. All favor, please say. Passes unanimously and ends our business items. So Janine, you have Mr. Mauer from P S E in the waiting room by chance?
Yes, I am bringing him over right now.
He's gonna share a lot of shared screen. And he's got a presentation for us.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you very much again for letting us join you today. I am Matthew Mauer, local government affairs representative for Thurston, Kitsap and Lewis counties. And my colleague next to me here is Melissa Troy, and she does customer outreach for us. And so without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, do you guys see my notes or do you see the presentation? Perfect. So I wanted to talk to you today a little bit about P S Es beyond net zero carbon goals related to both CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act, as well as just P S E's own climate change initiatives that we have going on. And also at the end, I'm going to have my colleague Melissa talk to you a little bit about our COVID nineteen assistance programs that we have currently going on. And also, this is my second time doing this slide as it is, or as this deck as is right now. And I did practice, but please give me some grace if I do fumble it a little bit, but a little bit overview of P S E. For nearly one hundred fifty years, P S E has been the local energy provider for neighborhoods and communities across Washington. One third of all the electric and natural gas energy in our state. As the state's largest utility, our thirty-one hundred employees are proud to keep the lights on and the heat running for more than one point five million customers. We continue, as I said before, to support customers impacted by COVID nineteen while also continuing to lead on clean energy so that our communities recover, even more customers can benefit area. So even more customers can benefit from a clean energy future. And so again, those COVID nineteen programs, you'll learn a little bit more about at the end. This is a quote from our new CEO, Mary Kip. She understands that our customers want clean energy. And today with this goal and with us going around to different communities, letting us everyone know we're we're letting everyone know what are what what we're going to be doing. Obviously, we don't have all the answers and how we're going to get there. But we do believe it's possible with the right combination of legislative, regulatory, commercial and technological advances. And we also know that a lot of important work is ahead of us as we balance our clean energy goals with customer expectation for uncompromised reliability, safety and affordability. And so I'm going to get into our our beyond net zero goal, the twenty-five, twenty forty-five goal. So by twenty forty-five, P S E aspires to be a beyond net zero carbon energy company. It is an aspirational but ambitious goal that does support P S E's North Star of being the customers, our customers, clean energy partner. Beyond net zero means that P S E will reduce our own carbon footprint to net zero. But then we plan to go beyond and help other sectors achieve reductions in their transfer their admission or their emissions as well. And just a little definition, net zero is that carbon emissions are reduced as as much as possible. And then the remaining emissions are a hundred percent offset by either actions or credit resulting in net zero emissions. Beyond net zero carbon gives us a holistic view that encompasses our entire energy supply, both electric and natural gas, our operations and the positive impact that we can have on other industries and sectors. We don't have, we, excuse me, we have decades of experience, P S E has decades of experience with renewable energy projects, conservation and innovation, and we will leverage all of those. But we are going to need the support and cooperations of key stakeholders like yourself to achieve, to achieve that success. I'm going to go over the three pathways that we have in our, in our twenty forty-five vision. And so the first is the P S E operations and electric supply. Our mission is, our commitment is to reduce emissions from P S E electric and gas operations. So that is all the employees and our buildings and our trucks to to net zero by twenty thirty. And by twenty forty-five, P S E will have a hundred percent carbon free electrical supply. And then the next is our natural gas sales for customer induced and induced carbon emissions. So our aspirational goal for this one is to reach net carbon emissions for natural gas sales by twenty forty-five. Customer use in homes and businesses with an interim target of thirty percent emissions reductions by twenty thirty. And the third pillar here is our beyond are beyond P S E reported carbon emissions. Our, our goal is to partner with customers and industry to identify programs and products that cost effectively reduce carbon across sectors and across our region and state. Examples to include transportation through electric vehicle implementation and the support of low carbon fuels, upstream methane emission reduction. So that may include those from extraction, production, processing and transportation operations. So as natural gas gets to the customer, there are different steps along the way where methane could leak and so reducing those methane emissions is something that we can do to help reduce the carbon emissions or the methane emissions, which are sometimes or not sometimes are a bigger greenhouse gas than carbon, so reducing those emissions as well. Again, some key support measurements to to get us to where we need to go is some is for instance, efficient citing and permitting of renewable transmission lines and generation. So things that we've come in contact with P S E in general, things that make things more expensive and harder to to get through the pipeline, linking with other Western jurisdictions for a cap and trade program to maximize efficiency for carbon and energy markets. And one that consistent, that has a consistent regional system that recognizes equity and reliability issues associated with localized carbon regulations. And so the next slide is a little bit hard to digest, especially if you're not right next to the the screen. I will have this and I'll send it to Janine afterwards so you guys can look at it. But this is kind of like our or pie chart sort of reduction pie chart thing where we show all of the things that we're planning on doing by the year. So obviously, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. And you know, beyond net zero carbon, it overlays the investments that we know we need to make to comply with the Washington Clean Energy Transformation Act with CETA. But a big difference is that CETA is purely focused on the electric supply. Beyond net zero carbon enable us, enables P S E to look holistically across all of our operations, encompassing our natural gas sales, customer induced and goes beyond, obviously, to reducing emissions in other sectors. P S E will continue to make infrastructure investments that support CETA and modernize the grid as well as pipeline safety for the foreseeable future, ensuring our energy is delivered safely and reliably. Over the next two years, P S E will evaluate additional investments that may support further carbon emission reductions and mechanisms for cost recovery, including implementation of pilots to analyze low carbon fuels, enhancing operational practices such as reducing natural gas blowdowns. And so for instance, natural gas blowdown is the release of gas from a pipeline into the atmosphere. And that's what I was talking about before the methane leaks in the gas, in the gas system. Some steps that we're going to be taking now between now and twenty forty-five. We will be going coal-free by twenty twenty-five in our electric system. And our electric system will be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Committing to net zero methane emissions in our local distribution system by twenty twenty-two. Increase of all our alternative fuels for power generation. And we plan on modifying tariffs and incentives to mitigate natural gas load growth, including changes to the line extension policy and appliance incentives. Expand customer programs such as energy efficiency and demand response paired with increasing utility scale renewables, so solar and wind and local distributed renewables and associated electric transmission. We do plan on electrifying most of our fleet vehicles by twenty thirty and use lower carbon fuels for fleet vehicles that can't be electrified and offset the remaining emissions by twenty thirty. Let's see. And so last thing here, as as part of our aspiring to net zero carbon gas sales by twenty forty-five, we do plan on implementing carefully designed statewide policies towards targeted electrification that optimizes existing infrastructure to maximize carbon reduction while mitigating impacts of vulnerable population. So for instance, hybrid heat pumps that use clean fuels such as renewable natural gas or hydrogen for backup energy in the cold winter months and then having the normal electric heat pump in the, you know, spring, summer and fall. Let's see. And then this is my last slide before we move on to the COVID assistance really quick. So P S E understands that slowing climate change requires partnership across all sectors. That is why we're building relationships with critical stakeholders as we act to reduce, to drastically reduce our carbon emissions. As we consider the opportunities to work together on climate solutions and energy, we need to ensure that the solutions pursued improve the livelihoods of all people. P S E understands that climate change is a global problem, but it affects our profoundly local and often refract longstanding patterns of inequality. In Washington State and beyond, P S E or excuse me, low income residents and people of color shoulder an outside share of climate burden, they often face greater risk from heat waves, floods and other climate related impacts. And they have suffered collateral damage from the harmful pollutants produced by using fossil fuels. P S E believes that now is the time for us to make equity a cornerstone of this vision for a greener livable future. And so it's, it's a big program. There's lots of questions still to be answered and how we're exactly going to get there. But I'm going to have my, my colleague Melissa talk about our COVID problem, our COVID assistance program first. And then obviously takes some questions after that.
Excellent. Thank you, Matthew. So we're going to be talking about our income eligible COVID assistance program. We've been able to put together with a robust program in order to help our most energy burdened customers at this point, next slide. We want to make sure that we're doing what's right for customers. So we have been a trusted community partner and making sure that we're doing what's right for families throughout our service areas. And in twenty twenty, we actually had our original COVID assistance program where we'd made about nine million dollars in bill assistance available to cover fifteen thousand customers that were in need that were clearly focused towards COVID relief in the time of lost jobs, low incomes, maybe reduced hours. And so we were able to help them fulfill their bill requirements and ease their burden that they had going on at that time. Next slide. So a couple of quick things to note is that we are continuing our no disconnections for non-payment through September thirty-first. This is part of a statewide guideline that has been extended a few times. The current guideline is that it won't be until September thirty-first. And that doesn't mean that power is going to be shut off right away at that point. It just means that that's the process in which we're going to start working with customers to make sure that we can keep their power on and that we work with them to make a difference in their utility bills. We're also not going to be collecting any fees. No fees on late payments or deposits for new customers through October thirty-first as well. So this is really helpful again, if people are just a little bit behind at this point. There's no fees that are going to be associated with having to make late payments on their account. And no deposits if customers are having to kind of move or transfer their accounts. And especially just during this time when there's a lot of transition happening. We have a ton of bill assistance programs that a lot of people are not familiar with. So besides our COVID assistance programs, we have a budget payment plan so that we can work with customers to figure out a better budget as utilities tend to be really low prices in summertime. They've got lower bills that they're looking at. And then during those winter months, when things start to get a little colder, they're seeing much higher bills. We want to work with them on a budget payment. We also have payment arrangements, low income weatherization, so free programs that'll allow for customers to have their home air sealed insulation installed, sometimes people replacing refrigerators. And this program is provided through our cap agencies in the Kitsap area. It's going to be through like Kitsap community resources. And then we also offer an internal program called P S E Help, which can provide assistance for customers if they just contact us and let them know, let us know that they've got some income guidelines that they need to meet and that they want to get some assistance from us. Next slide. So we were talking a little bit about how in twenty twenty, we put together that nine million dollar fund that was available for customers and we recognize that there's an additional need, especially as there's a large accumulation of accounts that are past due, some sixty days past due, some even just one day past due. But as we're starting to see more and more customers were being affected and having past due balances, we wanted to make sure that we were not only preventing disconnection of service once we resume our disconnections, but we also wanted to eliminate them for our income eligible customers to lower their energy burden and prevent credit disconnect. And also just make sure that they've got a really good step going forward. Next slide. So this is a really unique program for P S E. So it's going to provide up to twenty-five hundred dollars per customer per year. So this is an estimated twenty-seven million dollar fund that's available. It'll be available until we run out of funds. So that's why we talk about per year. So for the twenty-five hundred dollars, they can apply more than once in a calendar year. If they're behind five hundred dollars now, they can apply for that five hundred dollars in assistance. If they fall behind again towards the end of the year, they can reapply and get up to that twenty-five hundred dollars in assistance. And then it goes back to zero in the following year so they can reapply as as often as they need, as long as they don't go over that cap. We're providing twenty million dollars for electric customers and seven million dollars for gas customers. And we actually started this program back in April. We actually looked at all those accounts, saw that there were a lot of past due balances. And if we already knew that they were income qualified based on previous interactions with them, we did automatic bill credits to those customers and let them know via postcards, emails, phone calls that they were getting this automatic bill credit so that they could have a zero dollar balance and and basically wipe the their utility debt free. And then we opened up that public application on May third, which is now available online on our website in multiple languages as well. Next slide. So in regards to who qualifies for this program, we wanted to make sure that we met up with the month, like a monthly income requirement. So for an average family of four, that would be about fifty-two thousand dollars a year would qualify for this program of four thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars for a month. So they can go to pse.com slash help to learn more about the income requirement. And the great news about this particular program is that when you apply for it, it also will take a look at your application. And if there's other programs that you would fit into within our bill assistance programs, we'll actually kind of put you in contact with the right people so that you can get those additional programs and assistance. Next slide. You can definitely call our one eight eight number or you can go to pse.com slash help in order to apply yourselves. It really just takes a photo ID and unnecessary income documentation to prove that you are income qualified. You can use bank statements or pay stubs, even a letter to indicate that there is a need and then just completing the application form. So it's pretty simple application. And we want to make sure that any customer that's in a need of assistance at this point can be able to take care and advantage of this program. Next slide.
That is it.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. So thank you again for letting us come and talk to you today. Happy to answer any questions you want. I will stop sharing my screen.
I think it's been reaching out to me. We're having a little bit trouble, folks on the TV are having a little bit trouble hearing this. So we just make sure when we speak, this is our recording voice tonight. So make sure we look that direction and speak. And next work study, I'll try to maybe get that microphone down here. For tonight at least, just make sure we look that way when we speak. So questions for Matthew, Melissa? Okay, you mentioned that the fund was twenty-seven million until it runs out. How much has been used to date?
That's a great question. So so far, I believe there's been about seven million dollars used. That number changes on a daily basis. So last year, we actually had about eleven million dollars in funding and we only utilized nine million. And so the plan is that it will likely, this fund will be available for, you know, more than one year. The assumption is that it might be two years or more, just depending upon how many people do need to use it at this time.
Thank you. Great question. Other questions? Thank you, Matthew and Melissa. Appreciate you telling me and visiting us and sharing this information today.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a good rest of your night.
All right, we're on to our second item, which is a water and sewer capital facilities charge exceptions. And so Janine, if you could put up that PowerPoint presentation on the screen, that would be great. Maybe move the hand that's in the middle of his turn to. You can see that, but we can't.
You want me to bring Jackie over?
And Nick and Charlie.
Okay, so Nick and Charlie are already in. They just need to show their video. They're, they're available to talk. Let me bring Jackie over.
Okay. Jackie can turn her video off when she wants. And then when she wants to speak, turn her video. Any of you guys turn your video on when you want to speak. And then you'll hop up on our screen.
Yes, and this is the continuation of the waters were set.
Work that when we talk. Sorry.
So we talked about. So this slide presentation should be medium length. I'm uncovering the original. Can you move that big mouse, Betty Johnson?
I think it's this mouse.
Oh. There we go. Thank you.
Why is it doing that?
So we're going to look briefly at current tables for water sewer CFC exceptions or fees. And then we'll look at the proposals and we'll review some scenarios that we've run through and then have a brief discussion. So as we talked before, the current capital facilities charges are divided up into water residential, water commercials, sewer residential, sewer commercial, with the outlier being water commercial are charged by meter size versus ERUs. So Steph and Matt talked about this, looked at their scenarios, their analysis of what change looked like. And we are proposing moving to a simpler structure in which that we're not distinguishing between residential and non-residential and applying ERUs both water and sewer. So again, here's what our current table looks like. You can see the meter size for the non-residential and the sewers are all per ERU currently. And with the change, it would look a lot simpler. You have a per ERU charge for both residential and non-residential. And then as properties develop and change, there would be a calculation to determine what that ERU count was. Apply the fee per ERU. We'll come back to irrigation and have Jackie talk to you, talk about that a little bit later on. So the big question became, okay, if we move to ERUs and move up the meter sizes for the water commercial in particular, how do we determine what the ERU is? So Steph's proposing that we utilize current consumption data for the most recent three-year utility billing period. And within that three-year period, we're going to take the highest 12 and second month period to establish the base. Then we'll apply this formula, taking total consumption by 180 gallons per day or, yeah, 180 gallons per day, by 365 days per year to get to the total ERU count. We're also proposing remedies, ERUs up to the whole ERUs so that we are not fractionalizing our ERU count. So then the question became, well, since we're focusing on three years as our period of time to go back in the whole data that's tied to the retention schedule that's the archives for utility accounts. So we're working towards getting to be consistent in applying the state's retention schedule. So we think at some point, we will only have three years of data required. So then the question became, well, what if there isn't a consumption data for this three-year period? And so our assumption at this point is to assume at least one ERU would be available for this exception. So we had a good discussion about what that meant to finance committee. And I want to be clear that when we're talking about calculating areas, there will be a calculation to determine ERUs, which will determine the charge, the fee that we're going to apply. That calculation also for certain projects will determine the amount of exception to that or credit. There are a reduction or if you know that something there. But we're essentially reducing the fee based on the same ERU count. So this, what if no data for a three-year period, we're saying we're going to assume that there's at least one ERU of credit or exception to offset against the new charge. The other piece of the policy discussion was centered on the calculation will be proposed to exclude anomalies such as usually high consumption levels due to water length span or other extenuating circumstances that happens. Time and time there will be a large water. We can see in the survey data, we have a couple of guys who identified where their average consumption was 60,000 per billion period. So that outlier really throws off the amount of total credit that will be available in a redevelopment or projects. So we're proposing to exclude those anomalies. And then the last policy discussion point was, you're proposing that the applicant must maintain a minimum bi-monthly fee consistent with our state practices to be eligible, which means that they need to continue next, this is the thing. Some restaurants would just could disconnect the system or move the meter or the sewer drain. Air madness connected from our system. And in the future, if that property does redevelop, then they get the whole cost of their fee. But if they maintain that, maintain the city, they would continue to have the credit section. If they eligible for the session. So Jackie, I want to give you a chance to speak to any of those points if you can hear me.
I can hear you. And I was wondering if, do you want me to go into the irrigation or do you want to skip that for now and stick with just these?
No, let's start here, let's start these and then talk irrigation and then we'll move on to the other front footage fee and then move on.
Okay, well, I would just like to point out, as I did to the finance committee, that this last point here is pretty important because without a customer or who would have been a previous customer continuing to pay the bi-monthly fee, we have no money to maintain that service connection. And so it would place an undue burden on other active accounts.
Are we really just talking about projects that are sitting, sorry, sitting empty wells for sales?
That's, that's one, some of the scenarios, some of the scenarios are just simply redevelopment of site or changing the use of the site.
Part of one of the biggest that we're anticipating is change in use as.
We also need to see that. It's weird, it's weird, I know.
Did you go into the scenarios or see all the scenario? It's both changing use. So Jackie, can you speak to the irrigation component?
Absolutely. So am I able to share my screen?
I believe so. Jean, can you enable Jackie to share her screen?
Yes, Jackie, you can share your screen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is the actual language that is in the original resolution to exclude irrigation meters from having to purchase either pay CFCs or purchase a meter. Right here, it says, we're going to waive the connection fee for water systems which do not impact fire flow storage requirements. So I don't know where that original idea came from, that that doesn't affect the, the storage requirements. Because I have a, whoops, I'm not doing that right. Share screen. There we go. Here is this actual storage components within a reservoir. And this operational storage is where the set point is. And that, that's where our set points are, where it turns a pump on when it gets this low and turns it back off again. Then we have this equalizing and standby storage. Fire suppression is down here. So I don't understand how, I mean, if there's a fire, you're obviously going to use your operational storage first going into equalizing. And this is like the backup of the backup of the backup, this fire suppression storage. So I don't understand the concept of the, of an irrigation system not affecting fire storage. Because the first water used in a fire, like I said, is going to, is going to pull all of this water down until you finally get to the fire suppression. I checked with the municipalities and water purveyors around us, City Gig Harbor, Silverdale Water, and West Sound Utility District are the first three that I've checked so far. All of them charge for irrigation meters. So I think we're, we're potentially missing a revenue stream and not a, not a big one. I mean, this doesn't happen often, but we're also, again, placing burdens on those that it shouldn't be. They, each person, if even if it's an irrigation meter, should be paying their fair share.
An example earlier this evening, let's say a flat in the Hornet Woods where the PCHOA has areas that have irrigation, that is a meter. That meter has an impact, the water usage has an impact on the water system. They should be paying.
Here's the scenarios we've looked at. We looked at the same use going from a high to a low consumption user. Then we work that to go from low to high. And then we bring in our changing of use from residential to commercial. Then we talked about what mixing use up for the Joe Henry. Those first scenario are, example is a large restaurant becoming an office space, a four-unit suite. You see the first column there, the calculated currency. We would calculate this on the utility data that they're currently using five ERUs. When they submit their application for this new office, you identify that they actually only need four ERUs. One, you can see it's a reduction of ERUs. You see the available credit or exception that would be available to them. The new charges and fees, and then the net change. And in our code, there is no refund. So there just being no charge under this scenario. The next scenario, move from a low to a high consumption. Again, commercial, commercial, you have an office space, a two-unit. So you see two ERUs, you have one ERU per unit. Moving to a large restaurant, that's how we calculated the potential ERU use. And you see the increase of two ERUs with the credits being applied, the recharge and the net now change, which would result in a payment of roughly $20,000 for water and $24,000 for sewer. The next example is the single family becoming a office one unit. In this example, the single family represents one ERU and the office unit is one unit is one ERU. So the net is zero credit or charge, nothing charged, nothing refunded, so the change. Next example, that single family residence is changing to a small restaurant. So again, we start with one ERU, then calculated the application, then demonstrates that three ERUs would be necessary. The increase by two ERUs, again, you see the net change that there would be a need for the water CC as well as sewer. This is an example, and as well as the last one, of changing. So I'll remember being asked about this examples. So originally it was commercial, commercial. Now we're changing the use from residential to commercial. Our current code can provide. Changing that such a power supply. But that's how it will play out. Another change in use examples, a commercial moving to a residential, so a large box store, 20 apartments. Originally the calculated history demonstrated two ERUs were being utilized. The new application required one year per cut. Net increase of eighteen ERUs. Again, you see the credits being available, the new charges, those that change. So roughly $208,000 for water, $23,000 for sewer. So now we move to the mix, so there's all changes of one residential, the residential. Now we're saying there's a building, a commercial building that's going to be both a commercial and residential. So this is the example, we're looking at a large restaurant that, again, three-year data demonstrate four-year use applies. So that's going to be all of the credits. And they are designing, it's going to have a small espresso bar with approximately 40 units of apartments. See, there we have one ERU for the espresso bar and four ERUs for each apartment unit. A base, an increase of 37 ERUs. Again, you see the net change in the resulting fees and charges and revenue density of $428,000 for the water CFC and $448,000 for the sewer CFC. So I'm probably saying that's our last example. Yeah. So we can open up for discussion. Those are kind of the net results of the whole proposal. Change use and go away from this distinction to be residential. So that's where I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions on this stuff.
Yes, real quickly, you know, a lot of our other fees, we've started tying into inflation. Same type of increase based on inflation here. Or is this something that will be frequency, you know, every so often?
Current code for water CFC does have provision to adjust first the I P over. And that's the change in last six months. So this year, we'll change the sewer based on CPI and we'll not change the water. That's on the charge side. So my assumption, we can also adjust the credit, well, on ERUs, applying the credit based on the charge.
So the calculation is on ERU. And this is the methodology for making, you know, showing what ERU values are in clean code. So it's straightforward and easily done. Yeah. My other question is on ADUs and only for Nick.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, so I heard the word ADU mentioned and I want to go step back just one level, which is accessory uses in general. And our current code really isn't clear on how we handle accessory uses. And it isn't, it isn't totally clear whether an accessory dwelling unit is the same as a dwelling unit in terms of administering the capital facility charge for both water and sewer. Other examples of accessory uses that we typically see in a residential setting are home businesses, home occupations. We also have daycares for up to six children that can be within somebody's home. And so in those instances, we have not been charging an additional connection fee when somebody establishes a home business or a daycare. But our policy has been to charge for connection fees for accessory dwelling units. So as we are looking at amending this section of our code, I think there's an opportunity to clarify and sort of reinforce our policies as it relates to accessory uses within a home or a dwelling unit. The proposal that we shared with the finance committee earlier tonight and which we are recommending would clarify that accessory uses, when they're lawfully established, would not. Um, would not trigger the payment of a capital facility charge unless. And there's a couple of sub bullets here. So the first one is if you're talking about an accessory dwelling unit. As long as it is not on its own meter and is less than a thousand square feet. Or forty percent of the size of the primary house, whichever is less. Um, those dwelling, accessory dwelling units would not pay a connection fee. Likewise, um, if you have a home occupation, a home business, a home daycare. Um, those would also not pay a additional capital facility charge. Unless those uses were expected to generate more than one E R U's uh, worth of demand for water. So um, we're, we're proposing to insert that language in the code. The finance committee did have a little bit of discussion about the size of an A D U and in terms of what. A D U would be considered under the umbrella of the primary dwelling versus um. What the threshold would be before that unit has to pay an additional connection charge. And the recommendation from the finance committee members was to match the policy to our land use code, which caps the size of an accessory dwelling unit. At a thousand square feet or forty percent of the size of the principal dwelling. So that's the recommendation, but I would encourage the full council to have a little bit of discussion on that point. And make sure that you guys are all on the same page and can support that if that goes into the draft ordinance. Um, and if there's anything else you have questions on concerning accessory uses, I'm happy to, to answer those.
That makes sense, thank you. Nick, does the thousand square feet, does that apply to the lesser of the two?
Correct, yes. So if you have a two thousand square foot house, you only get an eight hundred square foot A D U. And so we're, because of it's over those thresholds, it becomes a second. Um, home on your lot as opposed to an accessory dwelling unit and then you have other land use. Requirements such as subdividing the property or applying to convert that to um, a different type of residential unit.
And Nick, do accessory dwelling units in the city include uh, what other, it's called. Mother-in-law apartments or accessory living quarters, is that?
So in, in our land use code, we have accessory dwelling units. And then there is another building type called a backyard cottage, which can contain an accessory dwelling unit. So. It's an accessory dwelling unit, whether it's attached or detached. And you have to get that permitted through D C D.
Okay, thank you. It's comfortable, those thresholds, which are consistent with our code. Anything else on this matter? Yeah, uh, Jack, can you talk a little bit about the, I bring this up as uh. With the guidance here and then we'll start drafting language to propose next.
You want me to talk about um, in lieu of assessment versus front footage? Was that what you wanted me to speak on, Noah? Okay, alright, so um, I have. Well, I thought I had a graphic here, but I, for some reason, my graphics keep disappearing. So in the, in, right now, the code says that we are going to char, we are going to um, charge. In lieu of assessment charge for property fronting on a water main and that's really a misnomer. So what Charlie and I worked together to do was change that language from in lieu of assessment to front footage. Because that's really what we're talking about, a front footage charge rather than an in lieu of assessment charge. And in lieu of assessment comes into play when a property does not front on a water or sewer main. And if there's, there are instances, and I had one to show you, I, I showed it earlier. Uh, but some reason my, my graphics keep leaving. Um, anyway, uh, an instance where there's a lot that, that's one lot off of a water main. And they don't have, there's no other water near there, so they're requesting that we provide them service and they are in our retail service area. So rather than have a, a eight inch water line, which is what the minimum size is, run for um. A single family residence, what we do is set the meter out at our water main and let them run a line back to their house. Um, across an easement between two other properties. And that's actually an in lieu of assessment and Charlie and I have worked together to put together an agreement that um. That people would sign, it then gets recorded with this, with the county auditor. It then gets, are you, okay, and then gets recorded with the county auditor. Um, uh, assessor's office so that in the future, if a water main does go by there or sewer, if that happens to be the case. Then what would happen is those people are required to financially participate in the cost of that water main or sewer main, whatever the case may be. Um, it's filed on the property so that it go, it uh, it stands in perpetuity so that if they sell it, it's still there. Um, and what it does is, uh, if a developer comes along, then the developer, whether it's through a late comer agreement or whatever. Has the opportunity to, to certify their costs to us and, and get paid back for the cost going across those people's property.
Some agree, other than there's the time with other groups like late cameras and things of that nature that are, right, so. And we can have example that was going in right now on Babel, like there, the low notes. Or reconnecting at huge a coffee shop with the service, the, the water main is. Theoretically, you know, at that point with this in lieu of, they'll have to connect. Is the screen, they'll have to connect to that main and then resolve, the person that puts in that main. Actually puts in a light cameras, that makes it pretty clean, so it pays light cameras, otherwise we'll have to set it. To be some sort of a credit model or something. They'll capture that, so, or, and we just, you guys just approved one for the uh.
Help line.
Where they connect from now on, spiral hill, and somebody sends that me, they, they just like.
So we've got, we, we, we've actually executed one, we have two more requests for them, there's something that don't happen very often, but. We just thought it should be in the code.
The main thing is, it's always been a problem. Cause that's a different thing, it's like a lot of people think that the light cameras. Is being, you know, is a different uh, thing.
Okay, yeah, I can say go back to Nick and I'm not quite sure who, but how does this work then for a. Like their words, uh, complex on the cow at the church where it's gonna be. A, for lack of better words, more of a communal system uh, bathroom, like every apartment is not going to have its own facility. Is that just based on, on you, you know, usage then?
Are you talking about the exemption? Yeah, the exemption, so you got a church and now they're gonna do eight apartments in there. So it's just a math formula and that.
Okay, so we run the same way regardless of the fact of how many bathrooms or.
They gotta tell us how they're gonna use it and then, and then know this code, uh, we'll have a math equation that we'll figure that out.
Okay, that makes sense, so.
That's what we're trying to make is clear cut, it's a, it's a math equation and there's no real interpretation. Alright. And I'm gonna attempt to share my screen, we'll see how this works for me. Okay, thanks guys. And so mine, the next item is mine, it's the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. And, and it is the uh. And these high point, uh, you can receive but on a uh. At the conference uh, session on these and so. There was way more information and I only captured the things that I felt would be relevant to our fortune and. How we could deploy our dollars and I've had since had a, Noah and I had meeting with the county and how they intend to deploy their dollars and I'll talk about that. So these are the high points, we, we will receive initially, we thought we were gonna receive three point two million dollars. Uh, because we were a non entitlement city, but we've grown up and the true path formula for entitlement city. Only gives us two point eight million, so entitlement city gives us direct access to the C B D G money. And, and uh, part of how I, I have the seat at the executive board at K R C C, but in this scenario, it didn't help us. And uh, as a, a uh. So we have more recording, recording requirements than a non entitlement city and we got a little less money. But uh, we'll be receiving two point eight million and it's two equal installments, one now and one next year. And we got the first installment a couple of weeks ago, one point, first one point four million dollars. Capital expenditures must be spent by twenty twenty six. Program funds, if you were, if you can do a program, it must be spent by twenty twenty four. And some of the, these are bullet points, there's caveats for economic harm, which is deemed to households. And businesses and nonprofits, local fiscal recovery, which is households, in particular, utility assistance and business recovery. Uh, is also utility assistance is, is a way we can spend these money. What Noah and I heard early on in a prior session that we were on, unfortunately, unlike the. Cares money, where we were able to contract with somebody and they administered it for us, you can't hire staff or anybody. Spend these months, so we would need to hire a staff person if we wanted to do a program. We have our own local dollars to pay that staff person, we could not use the other dollars to pay that staff person. So um, there's a, also an option for loss. In local fiscal recovery, which uh, would be our sales tax dollars, if we've lost sales tax dollars last year. Uh, we could put those directly into a bank account, as we're all aware, we didn't have any losses last year. And unfortunately, this is one of the things I advocated for through A W C was. To include revenue, utility accounts in that and when the legislation was uh, was written. It does not include our utility accounts, we do have losses, cost revenue there, uh, from not being. Where we know we can spend money is water and sewer infrastructure. And uh, cross projects must be eligible to receive financial assistance through D P A's clean water state revolving fund. Or drinking water state revolving fund and all of our projects are eligible for those, so we uh, don't have any concerns there. And in particular, uh, we can spend money to protect bodies of water from pollution, improve drinking water infrastructure. And consolidation of drinking water systems. And so we currently have two water systems, the corner system and the downtown system. And we have a project under capital facilities plan to tie that we don't have funded yet. To intertwine those two systems, we can also spend money for cybersecurity needs, but we haven't identified a. Like centers here for utilities. So uh, non, unallowable uses include payments of loan, replenishment of reserves. And non federal grant matches. The recording requirements are records must be retained for five years and after the last expenditure. Quarter where the reports are due thirty days after the end of the quarter and the reports are due till like third. As of July thirty first to October thirty first, if we'd have been a, still a. Non entitlement city, we just had to do an annual report. So that's gonna, probably we should, because of recording requirements. Probably limit the number of things we're gonna put these into because. Increases the burden for recording if we've got multiple ways of spending the money. That's saying we should, you know, so uh, so right now we have one point four million dollars in hand. Um, and I'm talking to staff, we believe our, our best options are. Uh, we've got the well eleven construction, it's likely gonna start next year. Um, we have a Marina pump station project that's gonna go out the bid and we have, we have funding for these. But we don't have identified funds for cost overruns, so as we get into these projects, it might, might be nice. To have some of these funds held in reserve to potentially help pay for cost overruns on these projects that potentially happen. Uh, we could do a utility grant program, but it, it'll have for consumers or small businesses. But as I spoke to, we would have to administer that ourselves and, and pay for that with our general, general line dollars. Uh, our recommendation is to spend roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and hire a design firm and design the old clip then tie a booster pump station. That will take us a year or more to get that designed done. And then at that point, we'll have the second installment of dollars and figure out where, where it makes sense to do. Then move forward with the construction, we should have enough money for the construction uh, for that inter time. Or potentially put funds into uh, either one of those large capital projects. If we all of a sudden find ourselves short on one of those two projects. So we've got some time, but I'd like to work towards deploying at least five hundred thousand of this into a, a design. Nothing else, we compete much better for grants when we have a, a design sitting on a shelf. And if nothing else, we, we advance the design we even have to, to shop for grants. We spend these on cost overruns for those large capital projects. It's that county, when we met, they have fifty three million dollars and they met with us, talking about partnering with them. And I, I think they're gonna struggle to spend fifty three million dollars, I don't think. Uh, help us, help us spend our money. So and based on our conversations, they are, the county is not looking at any uh, sort of. Capital needs, uh, like we are, they're gonna try to deploy most of these dollars. To economic services and economic recovery, which is great, it's needed out there. Um, it seems surprised when we told them, they, they didn't believe us that. They can't spend these dollars though for the staff to administer that, so they're looking into that, but it's pretty clear to Noah and I. So um, we'll see if the county reconsideres that or not, but.
Getting these, these dollars definitely cannot go to those.
Yeah, and it would have been absolutely nice for us and there were mayors asking for that. Uh, when I was on the uh, the call, White House, yeah, for that and they. What was interesting too is there was mayors from, from rural country and there's. Uh, mayor, governors in conservative states that aren't allowing the money to come to their state and so the cities are getting. Quite fair, but uh, and then lastly, there's a chart here, this, this is what came from us from the county. It's in the packet and it shows all the things that the county is considering on spending these dollars. Like we could be, it isn't this clear, cause it does speak to, to uh, protecting bodies of water. But it isn't called out same way sewer wise.
What I was thinking is that we recently acquired this property. Water system.
You didn't talk about Babel, but we did talk about another. Which one piece of property that we were, and that could be an option. Use funds to buy that piece of property, we're just, you know, the challenge is, I'd rather not be in the gray. Because these federal monies, all of a sudden, we've turned into a very short term loan that's due tomorrow. Because these federal monies, all of a sudden, we've turned into a very short term loan that's due tomorrow. Uh when we get it long, that would be spent it and um. Forget we get our our audit years, a couple of years down the road and you can get that money. So.
And the other point of that is. The money's going to be spent one way or the other. And yes. With the project that the mayor's talking about to purchase the property. The five hundred thousand if you if you type sign um just freeze. Five hundred thousand dollars that costs so.
I think step one is we just want to deploy this first by this, evaluate other options and and get the. The stormwater is something that Noah and I discussed, we're just not a hundred percent certain on it and I want to be a hundred percent certain. So we'll get this designed and look at these other big capital projects that we know are underway and hopefully there are surprises. And if we don't, then let's look for the next opportunity and how how we spend those on the on the next capital project. Let's finish the ones that we know we've got to start here in the next year or two. Okay?
There uh I understand why we, you know, the. Not uh allocate funds for individuals or or businesses. I mean, it makes perfect sense, you know, why maximize these these dollars. And the spend uh care dollars on businesses and and those individuals, I was just wondering if you had. And the information you were Noah on how uh businesses and individuals have. And such I, it's just the people I've talked to. Utilize the money for the likes of, excuse expression, screen right now. And so I was just wondering how is our city. How are city businesses and individuals doing?
No, I can't speak, I know we had a couple of hundred thousand dollars in two English utility accounts, but I don't know breakdown. And the beauty of spending is on on tip, you know, if we put this in investment into our utility accounts. It allows us, it benefits everybody equally and and it prevents us from. We're always gonna have to, unfortunately, things are cost more and connection charges and rates go up. And 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 you can minimize that by putting these dollars into these capital projects and potentially not have to raise them as much.
Yeah, and I know we've been working with our customers, I know that, you know, I know.
And we were talking about this finance too, because winners definitely winners and losers in this. Uh and our local economy is very robust, we taste it, we taste, we feel sales are the biggest driver in our increases. In in uh sales tax revenue. And the restaurant industry is hopping, but gosh, our bowling alley, our movie theater, I caught my dry cleaner. You know, we're not going to the office as much. You know, I wore a shirt and tie today, but it might be once or twice a week instead of. Five days a week, you know, and I don't think, I think we're all, we're working from home. We're not wearing a tie and probably a public whole shirt, you know, so we don't take those things at the front or so. So there's businesses out there, there still are struggling and suffering and that we're have over covered the way others have and and so.
Was there any discussion on on the emergency projects or?
We have very, legislation is pretty tighty. Jackie is still there?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I'm what? I didn't hear that.
You procure an engineer tomorrow.
I'm not an engineer, but. Yes, we need to have an engineering firm um under contract. We'll have to um do the bidding process to get an engineering firm to design the inner tie. Yes.
Yep, that was my tongue in cheek way of saying that.
Okay.
Those staff did get some more work out of this. Way to go, Jackie.
Well, and we also, just in case, um I I'm not privy to all your meetings, but we also have. Seven applications into the public works board for um loans for other low interest loans for other um public works project also. So if we are come through with even half of those, plus this ARPA money, plus the emergency uh Pottery Avenue fix, we're gonna be really busy.
All right, that's it for this and now Charlie and the chief. So I'm, well, I I don't wanna sour this, but uh there's some changes. Uh that have happened at the legislature and a number of bills related to police reform passed. Uh this last session and going into effect next week. And so we want to share uh that. To start to share that information with the community uh as uh our policing practices, the tactics change. So Chief.
Correct. Thank you. Uh I'm gonna face this way. These are your twenty twenty one Washington legislative updates. There are thirteen major ones. We're gonna talk about. The legislative updates that the community is going to see and feel the most. So this is House Bill ten fifty four, it's the tactics bill, or also known as the police tactics bill. This goes into effect uh Sunday, July twenty fifth. What it does is it prohibits chokeholds and neck restraints in any circumstance. Uh our police department has always prohibited chokeholds. Uh we did use vascular neck restraints in the past. Uh no one in our department is currently trained in that and we did remove that as a technique last year. Um House Bill ten fifty four is in opposition to House Bill thirteen ten. Which states that you can use any methods in deadly force. This creates a circumstance where you cannot use these technical restraints. To save your own life or the life of another. We'll see where that goes. Um it prohibits no knock warrants. I can tell you in twenty two years of law enforcement in this state, I have never experienced a no knock warrant. I've never seen any agency use a no knock warrant. Uh we are required by the law to state who we are, why we are there, and what we would like the occupants of any building or structure to do. And then we have to wait a reasonable amount of time for them to react to that. We are waiting for them to come open the door for us. Uh so operationally, this change is nothing for us. Uh prohibits firing at a moving vehicle. There there are exceptions. Uh vehicles are not assumed to be a deadly weapon just by definition, but if the driver is using that vehicle as a deadly weapon, that changes the circumstance. Uh while we recognize that uh using firearms to try and stop a vehicle, even if we stop, the driver doesn't necessarily stop that vehicle. This is something that may need to be used to preserve life. Uh and finally, it significantly restricts vehicle pursuits. So we'll talk about that a little bit more. So our current practice is that we utilize vehicle pursuits, apprehension, suspects for all types of criminal behavior. Uh whether that be for crimes against persons, crimes against society, crimes against property, uh traffic offenses. But as we move into this new era of policing, the legislature has been has made very clear that we are moving on to a different approach. So moving forward, beginning on Sunday, July twenty fifth, there's a couple ands and ors. So in order for law enforcement to pursue a vehicle for the uh. For a number of offenses, we require probable cause for either the driver or a passenger in that vehicle. And probable cause means we can arrest them uh for a violent offense or a sex offense. Uh and they are very, very specific and I have not listed them out here, uh but they are very, very violent offenses for homicide, for. Uh vehicular assault, for drive by shootings, uh some crimes that one would think is a crime of violence do not raise up to that level. Example of that would be a simple assault involving a domestic violence scenario. That does not count as a violent offense under the new law. Uh we would also require probable cause for an escape. That escape is from a facility, not from being custody if we take someone in custody and they flee from us. Or we can use uh reasonable suspicion if we have a vehicle that we believe to be. Uh with a driver that is under the influence of either narcotics or alcohol. And there's a lot of articulation that will be needed to be done with both of those. So probable cause or reasonable suspicion. And there's some additional requirements. So the pursuit is necessary for the purpose of identifying or apprehending the person. So if we don't know who it is, that's different than if we do know who it is. We also have to be able to articulate at the time that the person poses an imminent threat to the safety of others. And that risk of that imminent threat is greater if we allow that person to escape than the risk of to the community of that pursuit. And we'll talk about imminent threat and imminent body, that threat bodily injury throughout. In addition to those requirements, and this does affect our department as we are a little smaller, uh all. Uh pursuits shall receive supervisory authorization and all pursuits shall have supervisory control. What that means is if we do not have a sergeant on duty, we will not pursue anyone for any reason. Which is concerning, but again, we want to keep people safe. But if we need to make a, if we need to stop and not try and save someone's life. And call, that's just going to delay the response. We'll still do the right thing. We will still follow the law, but there may be a delayed response. So what does this mean for our community? With that reduced ability to pursue criminals, we have a reduced ability to apprehend criminals. Um and that may be reflected in in how our crime rates go, but that is yet to be seen. It also limits our ability to enforce traffic crimes. Uh we will continue to. Go back. Uh we will continue to enforce traffic. Um that is a goal of ours is to make sure that the uh motor and public and the pedestrians that mingle with vehicles are safe. But this may limit our our ability to uh stop by profile offenders. So uh House Bill thirteen ten is the use of force bill that also goes into effect on July twenty fifth. So this Sunday, our current practice. That officers shall only use that amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event. To investigate, which is an important distinction, or enforce criminal law. That's our current current. So this bill changes when force may be used and it changes how force may be used. So moving forward to Sunday, force can only be used when necessary. To protect against criminal conduct when there is probable cause to make an arrest or to effect an arrest. So uh using probable cause means I have uh fifty one percent belief that you have done something and that we are going to take you into custody. And that's how you were introduced to criminal justice. Affecting an arrest means that there's a warrant signed by a judge. And we are to take you into custody and present you to that judge. Moving forward, those are the, you know, that's a circumstance where you can do it. However, we cannot use force to investigate uh potential criminal conduct. Um that is a significant change and that is a significant operational um effect on how we may. Investigate those where we have a reasonable suspicion that a crime has been committed. But as we've said, we follow the law, this is what the legislature has asked us.
Can you give us a better than an example of that distinction right here?
Uh so if we respond to um a call of a burglary and. We have a, it's from an alarm company, which would not be victim of the crime that we. You know, we need to speak to the owner of the building. The alarm company calls up and says Jerry's got her sea legs under her. And we can see her in there and please go stop her. And we see her running, because like I said, she's legs on the end. We see her running. I do not have probable cause to arrest her because I have not spoken to the owner of that building to be assured that Jerry isn't in there by my permission. Or it's an accident, or she's starting her marathon. Therefore, I cannot use force to. I can ask for politely, but I cannot, I cannot make her stop. In addition to that, uh we can prevent an escape as discussed very similarly under vehicle pursuits. And we can use force to protect against the imminent threat bodily injury to a peace officer or another person, or the person against whom force is being used. And this is an important distinction because again, if there's no criminality in an act. And this does not allow for a uh an individual to create an imminent threat of bodily injury to themselves. There's a significant amount of a number of the population who need our help that we may not be able to aid. So the bottom line is this, when necessary means that we shall exhaust all reasonable alternatives to force. Before using an arrest or prevent imminent bodily injury. This may reduce the amount of time it takes, I'm sorry, this may increase the amount of time it takes for us to respond to a call. And it may increase the amount of time that we stay on a call before we take an action. Um we need to wait because we need to bring our backup. Um part of the escalation is often bringing extra bodies with us, extra police officers, so that as we engage with subjects, we can keep them safe. Um and we have found that bringing numbers also reduces the likelihood that there will be a force situation. Um however, what that may mean is that public calls for assistance. And we aren't there as quickly as we may be should be, because we cannot be. We need to uh use our de-escalation techniques such as time, space and cover and more conversation. So something that may happen inside of a business or inside of a home may take significantly longer. And that may affect the ability of the public to do the things that they would like to do. So if there's an issue that occurs in a restaurant. That maybe we could have resolved in five minutes if we were to use force, we need to exhaust all reasonable alternatives. Which may mean that we're there for an hour talking to this person and that may create uh disruption to that. But again, the legislature has been very clear that we need to slow down and do more de-escalation. Because of this, we may also need to disengage and allow the person to get away rather than using force, even if we have the ability to arrest them. Because we need to look at the totality of the circumstance. So if we have the ability to arrest the finance director for stealing a candy bar. And we go and we say, you're under arrest for stealing a candy bar and he would like to fight with us. We need to weigh whether or not we really need to fight with the finance director in order to take him into custody for a piece of property. And that also makes us consider if, you know, what is the value of property? Property is just a thing. And maybe we need to again look at the totality of that. And that's something that we'll be learning and experiencing together as a community as we move forward with this this new legislation. So. Yes, if you share it, you share it. So thi- this also will deeply, deeply affect how we respond to. Community members that are asking for welfare checks on family members. Um it'll affect how we um encounter people with behavioral health. Or codependent issues. The legislature has been incredibly clear. That if there's no criminal activity that is alleged, there's no imminent threat of bodily harm to others. We should not be attending to those uh incidents. Um we do not have the legal authority moving forward after the twenty fifth. To use force to detain anyone suffering from behavioral health issues under the Voluntary Treatment Act. It's not illegal to have behavioral health issues. It's not illegal to want to kill oneself. And we are being removed from those circumstances. As much as we have a servant heart, and that's why I've got it and read there, as much as we want to help, we can't go because we are being told that. We need to have other resources go. And we're working with other members of the community and we're working with other um agencies within the community to try and figure that out. So what we will do is evaluate each call individually. We are not going to just not respond. But we may respond by phone. We may respond in person if it's appropriate, but we're gonna gather information over the phone first. We'll likely call you back. And see if we can simply make a referral, because sometimes people in crisis may need to just be alone. And as much as we want to be there to help them, it may be more appropriate to leave them home alone or in. Or in in another circumstance, but it may not be appropriate without allegations and articulated criminal activity or an imminent threat of bodily harm to other people, it may not be appropriate for us to go. So we'll be making our referrals to the designated crisis responders, kids at mental health. Your department has a uh community health navigator that again navigates people through that referral process to try and get them to treatment and to try and get them to services. But there may be difficulties when the pu- the public calls and asks for the police to come, because we are the ones that work twenty-four hours a day. And an example that I will give is, I'm going to pick on the finance director again. Finance director calls up and says, my brother lives in Port Orchard and we talk every Friday. I haven't heard from him in three weeks. Can you please go check on him? Our answer is, moving forward, is likely going to be no. There's no criminal activity. If there's a medical issue, that's a fire department problem. And I can tell you that I have a personal experience responding to a similar call. It turns out that the brother and the other brother were in an argument and they didn't want to talk to each other. And he opened the door with a shotgun. So I have personal experience as to why maybe we shouldn't be going in this case, because that could have ended very tragically. Uh but we can do what we can, if there are legitimate medical issues, to try and have the fire department go. But again, they are emergency services. They are not standard services. This is also a big change. Uh runaways and status offenders, status offenders have been designated by the Board of Atresed Youth. And historically, we've been able to detain children to keep them safe. And we either get them to services and get them to guardians and parents, or get them out of the circumstance that they're in so we can help them. However, because being a runaway and being a, an atresed youth is not a crime, we cannot use force to detain them. Which means I can't stop them from leaving. Excuse me. So what we have done in the past is if I pick up your fifteen or sixteen-year-old child and say, I have Johnny, would you like to come pick him up? We usually get a response time of, I need to come, I'll see you in an hour. So we go buy him a cheeseburger, we bring him into our office, we put him in front of Netflix, and we sit there. And then mom shows up and everything, everyone's reunified. Moving forward, when we pick that child up, at any point, if that child, no matter how old, wishes to leave, I cannot use force to detain him. I cannot stop him, I cannot lock him inside anywhere. The child is allowed to leave regardless of the age, regardless of age. I cannot use force. Unless I can explain it even for a while. Well, if it's a six-year-old child or a four-year-old, I think that's a lot easier to explain this. That child may run into a busy street. But if it's a fifteen-year-old kid, just wanted a cheeseburger and wanted to watch Star Wars on Netflix, now I'm also leaving, we have that sort of nonsense. Uh this is, this is, uh the Blake decision was an earlier decision by the uh Washington State Supreme Court. Um it found that the simple possession on a charge for narcotics was unconstitutional. Basically, what they said is, we need to make sure that if there's that charge, you need to be able to show uh knowledge and intent. The legislative fix um that was put in immediately when this came into effect a few weeks ago um is that before we can make an arrest for the possession of narcotics, we now have an unfunded mandate to refer all narcotics possession suspects to treatment, at least twice uh prior to making an arrest. Unfortunately, no such referral system or treatment process was established under that bill. Um and we are trying to figure out what that means and how we can, how we can address that. The, the hope is that we can have something at least countywide, where if a, a suspect is referred twice in um polls vote, we'll know about it and we can then arrest them, because oftentimes, at least in the current system, in order for persons to be mandated to go to treatment, it has to go through the criminal justice system. So again, without having that set up, we don't have an umbrella or any way to catch these people that do really truly need help. Uh but we are working on that and hopefully we'll be able to reutilize that. Uh so without any other questions, yes, sir.
So is, will there be a process, I have a couple of questions, to evaluate whether appropriate force was used? And and let's say that it was determined somehow um that excessive force was used or force should not have been used. What's our liability with that? Does that person get to go to breed? What does that look like?
Oh, I would certainly refer any liability questions to the city attorney, but what I can tell you, we do have a process. Uh we, we review all uses of force, um beginning at the supervisory level to the deputy chief and the high sign off officers. We look to see if we have followed policy and sometimes we may make an error, sometimes we may, was it the sake of the head or the sake of the heart? So we, we have to look at that and see what would be appropriate response. There's an excessive force incident that is you know, we investigated, might that is imminent. Whoever, well, that's a separate, that's a separate issue. So we, we review use of force since this term. Finally, we arrest. Uh the state now, under some, a different bill that I didn't have up there, has the ability to do their own investigations, to decertify these officers outside of whatever the city or my department.
Charlie, do you have an answer for the legal risk question if we run out?
I can't answer that in an open public meeting, uh but I'm happy to have a conversation with the council member offline um under privilege. Uh but you know, the, I think the chief did a good job of summarizing from a procedural standpoint, how the city addresses this. And and the city already has the practices in place for analyzing use of force incidents and for documenting and memorializing that analysis. So we're, we're using a process that's already in place and applying it to these new uh sort of expanded rules.
Okay, well, yeah, chief, a couple of things. So if I'm at home, you know, my wife calls threatening to commit suicide, uh leaving you out of this though, you know, but you know, and so I mean, and you, you're basically not going to respond. Uh you're going to talk to her and even if you did respond, you couldn't use force to stop her.
So what, what, and yeah, I, I, I can't, you know, what if on her side or whatever. It's something that's basic level of information. We would speak with your wife. She's safe, she's not at home. You're at home by yourself. You're only creating risk to yourself, but you can't, under the new law, you can't create an imminent threat of bodily injury to yourself. We might call you, hey, would you like to go to the fire department, go to the hospital? And if you say no, that's it, that's, that's pretty much it. And and it becomes more and more difficult to start talking about this. So when we know we have uh that downtown, if she were to do that downtown that, that is, uh it's all the same.
Second thing is, as you point out, this is legislative, they're signed by the governor. I'm, I'm sure the police have a lobbying, you guys at the table for this?
I, I wasn't personally, I don't know. No, I, I mean, I, I certainly can't speak to, to some of our organizations and get walk-offs, which is, I don't have to remember that. We also have a lot of people, which is Washington Association, chairs and police chiefs. And I don't know how much they were involved. There are certainly some concerns that I think that every law enforcement agency in the state shares with some of these and some of them. Our hope is, you know, again, we work within the law, so it's very, very helpful for us that bright black and white lines, because we work out and feel with gray, we have solid uprights. You know, so we know where we're bouncing off of. It makes it easier for us to work in uncertain circumstances. Going into uncertain circumstances with uncertain laws, uh it makes it difficult sometimes.
Yes, some of these are a bit sound and open-ended. We don't doubt, we don't know the consequences, it's going to be.
Correct.
Thank you. I, I would speak to it from the Association of Washington Cities, the lobbying on this. While we recognize the intent, what the intent was, what some of these bills looked like early on in the legislative process is far worse.
Yeah, the other thing too is it's not our job to judge and test. We, we have to look at the I can't guess what the next, we take the words on a piece of paper and that's, that's what we do. While we certainly believe that there's some intent there, it may not look the same on a piece of paper. So there's a legislative fix, we need to follow exactly what is written in the law. Thank you, chief.
Yes, I just was curious about uh the description of the challenges of deprogramming your staff who, who has obedience for years and now have to think comparatively differently.
Uh that is absolutely true. I've been in the business for twenty-two years and I can tell you, you think there are for me, right? I get addressed like them, but I'm your chief executive and I spend my time here and they spend their time out in the field. We had as many conversations that we could have, there's still some concern. And this is, this is a lesson around really, really truly shifting number of people. So what we've been speaking to a lot is, you can slow down, take your time, really evaluate, really if you ever believe that that is some legislative, law process, slow down.
And to add to that, we're rolling out additional training in report writing and documentation, which is imperative under the new laws to protect the officers and ensure that they've gone through the steps necessary and to give them those skills. So, you know, to the extent there's any learning curve, the chief and his staff are supporting the officers with that additional training.
Yeah, so we have, uh again, this is going to be quite a bit between now and the year this Ms. Archer brought up. I mean, we are bringing uh experts on use of force, which is really what the legislature is expecting. Uh we've got a lot more full-taker stuff on our end, according to what you said. We haven't until twenty twenty-eight, didn't we? We're in work trying to not by the end of the year, no sprint, because it's important that that's on the basis. Uh but really willing to try and focus our staff on a regular basis, even if it's only ten or fifteen minutes a day to start reinforcing these things changing the way we
Hopefully, we're right, we're going. It's probably going to get mandated upon us and the, looking at the front of this is and from a risk standpoint, to prove what we did do and what we didn't do. It's probably five years, you know, police officers and it's expensive and it takes people to manage and back records. Call all the records. But settlement, right, because, you know, somebody were
My concern is But I'm more concerned about the person, it's all on the street here. They're calling, expecting a response. Some of those situations. Don't go off, but yes.
I, I think we're going to need to take this segment of this meeting.
I, well, I, I agree, or, or, where, why? Yes, so.
I was just saying, my mind goes to a very high-profile situation that took place last week or between Maple Valley and Redmond. There was a professional football player that, that had uh was in a crisis situation and did damage with his car. And there were people who were very, very afraid and they had done everything they could to stop them. And what I'm hearing the chief say is, the police had no way to stop him either. After July twenty-fifth. And what they did do was they used the police on him. That's what I
Yes.
To tame the person. So the police stopped this force, is that not correct?
Yes, and they actually, uh they, there's a, part of one of the bills is going to create a work group to look at how came in and are used. Uh there had been references along some of these bills to, to limit that. Uh there was not a conversation, say, well, how, how we As you said, body cancer are expensive, but we expect to maybe next year, we are have it. So what, what we have done already is, we've been with our community advisor before, uh seven weeks ago. Uh we spoke to the community and to you tonight. Uh I also had a bunch of standing advisors, other than you. Rory and all the others. We were waiting to have this public presentation first and then we will the response, how busy it's been to come to see you on Monday morning. You may be in the town hall, it's, we can likely do that. Well, and an example would be, as you're supposed to you know, if someone goes down the dock and goes to Jerry, it will go and it's down the floor. I do have probable cause for a crime. The expectation nowadays is that we spend as long as we need to spend, escalate it, and let's avoid the vector of this.
Are you pretty vocal with sort of non-lethal restraint of partners coming into the building? See these things that you're, you know, so I haven't had a chance to talk with you, but
So there's a, another section of law, which is called military equipment. And one of those, we don't have, it's very specific on the number of things, missiles, grenades, other things that we do not have and have never seen or ever used. Uh it talks about arms and drones and, and, and I mean, certainly, you know, the, the legislature are looking at those are things the military has, they don't, they don't provide to us. That's, that's One other thing that is stated in there is that firearms and ammunition, fifty caliber or radar are no, the lead is the intent of that is lethal ammunition, however, it doesn't specify. And we've spoken, that changed my opinion. So um in, in conversations with um regional partners and conversations with other members around the state, um we have determined that uh we are going to remove our forty millimeter less lethal um launcher, which is a de-escalation tool, because it's something that will allow us to use a level of force that is below deadly force at a distance. Um with the goal being of being able to take a person into custody safely without having to um cause significant hopefully not cause significant injury and certainly not cause a circumstance of deadly force. Um we're going to, we're exploring some alternatives to the tools that we have now. Um but at this point, based on the uh the language in the law, uh we believe that it is a wiser decision to not deploy those items. Even though the intent of the legislature has been very clear that we, we need to be using more de-escalation tools and less lethal tools. But because of the caliber of ammunition and the fact that it is a firearm, it does not qualify for us to continue to field outside. Do you agree with that, Ms. Archer?
I do, uh with one caveat, the, as we, as the chief mentioned, the intent of the legislature is not necessarily our guiding principle, because we can't necessarily interpret the intent. And I have also heard that it may have been intentional to prohibit this particular weapon for some reason, for some of the legislatures. So it's unclear whether we will ever be able to reutilize this particular weapon, but it is clear that under the, the uh language of that particular act, that this type of um tool is no longer available to the police department.
Would you recommend the presentation we give? Give it to the camera?
Yes, it is.
No, no.
Oh.
When we put on the website, we, we make a production of this presentation.
Well, I'm glad I didn't hear it.
You and Janine can work the details out, but it's right, you're right there in front of that, it's, it's pretty good and with, with powerpoint.
All right.
And, uh, maybe we make a presentation that doesn't. So, that's, we're done with our business items and what's to do good of the order? Jay, when you got the, um, came back of vacation on Saturday, wasn't anything in the refrigerator. Uh, so we came downtown for dinner. Place was hot. Was great to see, people were in good humor, uh, had dinner, they had a lot of activities going on that day. Corporate, women involved, cheer or not. I, I, I went to a different one.
Yeah. Uh, we were very well, but, uh, it, it was, it was great to see and we were in good, good spirits. Also, very positive.
It's hard to find stable.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Stand adjourned.